Okay, good evening, and I'll call to order the April 19th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first item of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, our invocation. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day. Lord, you create these days, and you give us the ability to be able to serve and to do the things that you've called us to do. We thank you for the opportunity. We thank you for the many blessings that you give to us. We ask that you would give us guidance here. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Josh.
Okay, our next order of business is public hearing, and the first item of our first public hearing, I'm sorry to stutter. Our first public hearing is for approval of Economic Development Grant of Incentives on an investment of $2.5 million by Sunoco Products Company to add a new thermoforming line and addition of 15 new employees. And we have our Program Administrator David Francis here to talk about that. Hey, Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well. It's an exciting day for me, you know, to be able to bring these two economic development deals to Haywood County. You know, with the past year, with everything going on with COVID, you know, we hear all the bad things that are going on in the news. But here, luckily in Haywood County, tonight will show you where two companies have actually started growing and gaining ground and jobs and making investment, capital investment back in Haywood County due to COVID. So it's an exciting time, you know, for the, it's been a joy to work with Sunoco and Giles as we go through this process, because it is a process, and it takes a while. We started working on these, you know, back in the late summer, early fall, and it takes a while to get to this point. So it's pretty exciting here. So Sunoco Products is a $5 billion global provider of consumer packaging, industrial products, packaging, supply chain services. Sunoco is close to, they hover around being a Fortune 500 company, around 523, 27 each year they finish up there. They're headquartered in Hartsfield, South Carolina. They started all the way back in 1927. Wayne'sville Location specializes in thermoforming, mainly produces frozen food trays, which you'll see those black food trays that you see from the frozen dinners. The producer, the majority of those come out of the Wayne'sville Location. Food trays, portion control cups, blow mold bottles, adseptically processed beverage containers. They have 130 employees with a company average payroll and benefits of $7 million. So they had a line that went down several years ago with, due to COVID, they're going, Sunoco's going to invest $2.6 million to add a new thermoformer line in the facility. That is, we'll be manufacturing the frozen food dinners, will create 15 new jobs, provide an average wage of $36,600, with the company paying more than 50% of the employees' insurance. Sunoco will pay approximately $53,700 in taxes over five years on the new investment. County will grant back 50% to the Sunoco of approximately $26,900 over five years for the capital investment. County will also grant back an additional $2,687 or 5% for paying near the county average wage, and another $1,612 for providing more than 50% of the employees' insurance. The total incentive is $31,166 for a total grant back of 58% of the taxes paid. So at this meeting, we'll have a public hearing. At the next meeting, the board would approve these economic incentives. At that time, the county would enter negotiations for Economic Development Agreement between the Sunoco and Haywood County. And just remember, all these projections or estimates can change by tax rate investment, depreciated value equipment, and the number of employees. Like to thank Pam Wagner from Sunoco. Unfortunately, she cannot be here tonight. C.C. Hips, she's on vacation. She apologizes for not being here as well, and Clark Duncan, who helped out on these as well, too. Board, do you have any questions about this?
Has anybody had any questions at all?
I don't have any questions. It's good to see.
Okay, so I need to open it up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So would anyone from the public like to comment on item one of this public hearing? I mean, on the first public hearing and under public hearings. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, and we'll move towards the second hearing. Public hearing is for approval of Economic Development Grant of Incentives on an investment of $5 million by Premier Magnesia LLC, also known as Giles Chemical, for expansion of their operations and addition of 35 new employees. Dave?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We'll go back and explain a little bit here as well, too. Premier Magnesia, Giles Chemical. Giles Chemical began operations in Haywood County in 1950. They are headquartered here in Wayne'sville. Their worldwide headquarters is here in Wayne'sville, North Carolina. They are the largest producer of magnesium sulfate, Epsom salts in North America. Operations on Smather Street, Carmar Street, Lee Plant Road, and Giles Place, all in Wayne'sville. They also have another manufacturing facility in Glendale, Indiana. Premier Magnesia owns and operates a magnesium mine in Gabs, Nevada. They're only domestically mined source of magnesium ore in the U.S. In 2007, Premier Magnesia merged with Giles Chemical, Epsom Salt, and formed their new company. So the scope of the project is to invest $4.5 million in the facility on Lee Plant Road, another $500,000 in Carmar Street and Smather Street, create 35 new jobs. They provide an average wage above $40,000, with the company paying more than 50% of the employees' insurance. So the Haywood County Economic Development Incentive Program, Premier Giles will pay approximately $125,000 in taxes over the five years on the new investment. County will grant back 65% to Premier Giles for approximately $81,000 over five years. County also grant back an additional $6,225 or 5% for paying above the county average wage, and another $3,700 for providing more than 50% of the employees' health insurance. Total incentive, $91,000 for a total grant back of 73%. Again, same process will go this. Board approval at the next meeting on May 2nd. The county at that time will enter into an Economic Development Agreement with Giles Premier Magnesia. And, you know, as always, projections or estimates can be impacted by investment tax rates and all that. So Matt Haynes is here. He's the Vice President of Operations. Matt, if you'd like to come up and speak, you're more than welcome to. Again, thanks to Matt, C.C. Hips, and Clark Duncan for helping on this as well, too.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming, Matt. Appreciate that. Okay, so I'll come up to public comment period four, number two of public hearings. Would anyone like to address the board and comment on that public hearing? Okay, okay, hearing no one, I'll close that portion. So is that it on this?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Is that what we need to do? Okay. So we'll vote on this next time, on both of these incentives.
Yeah, they'll be on the agenda for May 2nd to approve the incentives, and at that time, then we go ahead and complete the EDA. That will come back before the board at a later date for final approval.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Good news.
Our next order of business is a public comment session. Would anyone like to address the board during the public comment? Hearing no one, I'll close the public comment period for the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns. Brandon, do you have any that you'd like to?
I do not. I've had some that's already been addressed.
Okay, Kirk, do you have any?
No, Brian, I had some, but Brian and I were working on them this past week, and Stephanie.
Okay. Jennifer, have you got anything?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. Tommy? Okay, all right. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move to agency, administrative agency reports and presentations, and the first item will be the Haywood County Commune, I'm sorry, the Haywood Community College 2021-2022 Budget Presentation, and we have our Haywood Community College President, Dr. Shelley White, here tonight. Welcome, Dr. White. How are you?
Hey, I'm doing fine.
Good.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. Although this has been a year of challenges for all of us through the pandemic, it has also been a year of opportunity for Haywood Community College. We have been so inspired by our students, who have persevered to stay focused on their education, and I would like to commend our faculty and staff, who have worked diligently to meet increased needs brought on by online learning and conducting in-person instruction with social distancing and safety guidelines that we've all now experienced. We are so proud that by focusing on safety and keeping our mission in the forefront, that HCC remained open throughout the pandemic to serve our students and community, including the operations of the Regional Center for the Advancement of Children, which offers childcare and vital early learning on our campus. Over the past year, the college has celebrated the groundbreaking of our new Health Science Education Building, achieved 10-year reaccreditation for our medical assisting program, and gained recertification by NIMS, which is the National Institute of Metalworking Skills for our machining program. This year, we've added new short-term workforce training for truck driver training, diesel mechanic, and horticulture, and four short-term training options for dual-enrolled high school students in pharmacy tech, EMT basic, fire academy, and nurses' aid, which is going to be at Central High School. And I'd just like to recognize, because he's here, Doug Birchfield, who's our Dean for Continuing Education. He's here for the Economic Development Conversations, but wanted to recognize him because he's so critical for all of those short-term training programs that we've been able to get started this year. So thank you, Doug. We are excited to be holding a series of in-person graduation ceremonies next month on our campus to honor the achievements of our students and to celebrate this important moment with their loved ones. And we are also planning a more traditional in-person schedule for fall of 2021 while keeping flexible and hybrid options available. As we look to the future, this year, the college has been engaged in strategic planning, which will guide us for the next five-year period. And I would like to thank Chairman Inslee for participating in a full day of planning with our Strategic Planning Task Force last month. While we are in the final stages of developing this plan, it is clear that the emerging themes are, number one, growth of our programs and students; number two, engagement with our community; three, a focus on infrastructure for both facilities and technology; four, focusing on talent to be an employer of choice and to be able to recruit and retain the needed faculty for our programs; and number five, support for the success of our students in helping them meet their goals, whatever that may be. I look forward to sharing this plan with you once it is approved by our Board of Trustees in June. Although we serve students from across the region and beyond, we are first and foremost Haywood's College, focused on the educational and lifelong learning needs of Haywood County, our community. We are your partner in education and in economic development as we work together to build a solid future. So it's been an interesting and exciting year, and now I'm going to shift to share with you our county budget presentation. Okay, so first off, this summary slide just demonstrates that we're requesting an approximate 3% budget increase overall from last year's request, which in total is approximately $90,500. And I will save going into the detail of those three items that are additional requests as we look at those individual slides on the next one. So about a 3% increase. The first is an increase to our salary and fringe benefits line, and this is in the total of $45,000. And this is for an additional maintenance personnel for our campus development team. It would be for one position and benefits, which are provided as state benefits through the community college system. Our justification for this position is that HCC has grown by over 100,000 square feet over the past year, six years, which includes the new Health Sciences Education Building, which is currently underway. And our physical resources include in total 400,000 square feet of interior space. So in looking at the increased demands on our current maintenance staff, this request would assist, as well as the additional specialty laboratories that require unique maintenance skill sets, such as our burn tower for the firefighter training, which we'll talk about firefighter training in just a second. Remember to keep pressing forward. Okay, the other two additional requests are in other costs for a total of $45,500, the first of which being for our public safety training facility. If you can believe it, we are now at the five-year inspection and maintenance window for this facility, which is required by the National Fire Protection Association. And so we are requesting an additional $25,000 to conduct this review and make any necessary improvements to that facility. In addition to that, we're requesting an additional $20,500 in additional sanitation and PPE supplies for the coming year. As we are planning a more in-person fall schedule, we anticipate the need for increased cleaning supplies and other supplies to support that return. So this next slide is just a summary of our total county budget request. Highlighted on the right-hand column, those additional items that we're seeking this year, which again totaled to approximately 3% increase over last year's funding. At the bottom of the page, you'll see our capital outlay request, and I'll go into more detail about that, but we're going to be requesting $350,000 from our capital outlay request this year. So the detail on our capital outlay request for this year, total of $350,000, we have requests in two primary categories. One is in advanced planning for approximately $300,000. Advanced planning services will allow us to acquire professional design services and have these two projects ready for construction when funding is available. The advanced planning will expedite the process in achieving these end goals in a timely fashion. So the first item that we're requesting funds for advanced planning would be to improve our Armory Drive entrance. So if you're familiar with the main entrance of our college, if you're familiar with the Armory Facility on Armory Drive, which I know you are, just past that is a gate that can access the upper part of our campus. And we've seen increased usage of this entrance and exit, and is particularly helpful now that we have construction going on on the corner of campus where our new Health Science Education Building will be. So with that increased usage, we would like to improve that entrance/exit of the campus. The usage that it's seen over the years, it has become, begun to deteriorate even more. It was never really designed to be a primary entrance. It has a pretty steep grade, and so there would need to be quite a bit of grading there and shoring up of the sides for it to be an improved entrance and exit. But we also see that as a safety issue, if we ever have to evacuate our campus, or, you know, just have a lot of vehicles moving through, or an alternative entrance, as we had when we had a major paving project on our campus. That entrance does serve as a very good safety feature for our campus as well. The second item for advanced planning that we're requesting is for upfits to the Regional High Tech Center in the amount of $225,000. And this advanced planning would support upgrades to the building system components. This building was first built in 1986, and it's 27,000 square feet. It has had, in the past couple of years, a skylight replaced, which had some issues, but also needs a full roof replacement. And we've seen, over the years, some reupholstery happen, but other than that, very few improvements have been made within that facility. So we would love to bring that facility back to be a high-tech showplace. We've maintained and been able to improve the equipment that our students use inside that facility. So rest assured that the equipment that the students are learning on is high-tech, but we would love to give the building that same high-tech look and make it be that showpiece that it once was. The goal would be to have the High Tech Center accommodate our current and future student and programming needs. We also use that facility for our Small Business Center seminars in person, and the facilities available, the auditorium, for the community's use as well, which in non-pandemic times had a pretty high usage. The third item is for security and surveillance camera upgrades at the Regional Center for the Advancement of Children, and this is in the total of $50,000. The upgrade is needed to increase safety and present, excuse me, prevent potential downtime over the next several years. So just an upgrade of that system, it's time for that security system to be upgraded. So that total request is $350,000 for those three items. And that concludes our county budget request for this current year. We'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
Is anybody having questions for Dr. White?
The childcare facility, how's that going?
So the Regional Center Child, the Regional Center for the Advancement of Children on our campus, we did operate throughout the pandemic. I don't know that we had a day that the entire facility was closed. We had a few days where we had to close classrooms, you know, from exposures and things like that. But even at the beginning of the pandemic, we stayed open, and our enrollment dropped from about 130 students to about 30. Right there at the beginning, people were keeping their children at home, but we were committed to remain open. We had a lot of parents who were working in healthcare fields and frontline workers, and they needed that consistent childcare. So we were very proud to be able to keep our facility open during that time. We have received, over the past year, a few, several months actually, of support from the state for our maintain, you know, maintaining operation, which has helped to offset some of the declines that we saw in revenue during those months. But we're just continuing. At this point, we're back up to our enrollment that we were prior to the pandemic, and look forward to moving forward. We do have challenges with recruiting teachers. We had a job fair not too long ago, but we, you know, just welcome new teachers to our facility and look forward to continuing to provide that service to our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. White, you said that your enrollment was back up to levels that's above what it was prior to the pandemic?
At the childcare center.
At the childcare center, I got you.
Yes.
How about overall?
So overall, for, our most recent full-term data that we have is from fall of 2020, and we saw about an 8% decrease in our fall enrollment for our curriculum classes. Not quite as much for our continuing education programming, but we did see about an 8% decrease overall.
So something that you see across the state? I mean, is it pretty, I figured so?
Yes, the average decline was around 7%.
Okay.
Yep. And it's an uncertain time, because we're not sure when, you know, individuals will be comfortable coming back, or when they will seek out short-term training, degree programs again. But we're very much, you know, prepared to take folks back, and we're out there recruiting and connecting with the community. So, yeah, we're looking forward to the future.
Shifting gears a little, I know that when I was at the High Tech Center last time, I did see a lot of needed repairs at that facility. So I would agree with you. You know, there's a lot of updates that need to take place there. So glad to see that that's on the list to be done.
Thank you.
I also applaud your attention to the High Tech Center. I think it's centerpiece for future economic development. I know as high-tech jobs come in our area, our general area, and I think the speaker, it's on the agenda possibly after you might touch on that with Pratt and Whitney. And I know your background with Ashford Bunkin Community College and the partnerships that community colleges have with the industry and manufacturers. You know, it's critical that, you know, we maintain the cutting edge, you know, taking care of the High Tech Center. Generally, those produce very high-paying jobs, technical jobs, and it's definitely something that we need to stay on top of. So I applaud your attention to that matter. So thank you for coming, and thank you for everybody. I can't see the lady, and there's a glare on the wall, but I see Brett back there, but I can't. Thanks for your entourage coming and presenting your requests.
Thank you.
Congratulations on having a live graduation. That's going to be a good time. I'm sure everybody's looking forward to getting some normalcy, and that's a big time in those graduating students' lives. Can you elaborate just a little bit about the short-term training options? Is that something that you saw an increase in during COVID, where people were maybe staying at home, or those programs continued during that, right?
So during the pandemic, for our in-person training, we have focused on the critical skill programs, healthcare, but really any, any program that required a face-to-face and in-person component for, for learning. So welding, cosmetology, we've had all of those programs running on our campus in person, including our short-term training for our emergency workers, emergency personnel. Some of those programs never missed a beat. We had our largest VLET class ever that started last spring, right at the height of the pandemic, and it was held in person. So we're very proud that we're able to continue to do that.
That's good.
But the focus on short-term workforce classes, I think because they are shorter, they are flexible in many ways, people can make the decision to do that while balancing family and, and work at the same time. So maybe the decision is a little easier than taking on a full degree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Congratulations again on graduation.
Well, we're very excited about graduation. So we are going to be holding a series of seven in-person events to be able to do that within our auditorium facility within the guidelines over a two-day period. Yeah.
Good idea. I noticed whenever you were first, when you first came up, you were talking about the programs that y'all did this year. I think one of them was diesel mechanic. Can you repeat those again?
Yes. So new short-term workforce trainings and truck driver training, which is a partnership with Caldwell Community College. So we'll be hosting that in partnership with them. That's something that we, if we see traction with that, and we could potentially look at starting our own program here. But they have all the equipment and all of the coursework and everything, so we partner with them. And then diesel mechanic, diesel mechanic. So we had a grant through ARC to add some equipment to our automotive lab, and we'll be able to be offering those classes. I think, actually, Doug, starting today.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Did you have a lot of people sign up?
I think it was a small group to start, but we're, again, it's like during the pandemic, we're, we're gonna, you know, see it build. we're gonna, you know, see it build, but getting some traction on that.
Okay. Those are good-paying jobs. I mean, you know, my son-in-law's a diesel mechanic, and he does really well. It's really amazing and stuff, so, okay. Anybody have any other questions? Do you want to say anything, Brian? Any comments?
I guess we started working on this a month and a half, two months ago, and talked about a target operating increase. You'll know the capital for the college is based on Article 46 sales tax, the quarter cent. So those funds are performing really well, like sales tax for the county. So by the time we pay some debt and pay their request, we actually have more money still reverting to their fund balance. So it's well within the sales tax budget.
And I will say, we will not be like Bunkham County. We will give you the money that comes to you. We're not going to use it for something else, like Bunkham County did, so. But every dollar that, when the voters voted for that, they voted for the community college, and we make sure it goes there, right?
That's right.
We must appreciate that.
Yeah, okay. You're welcome. So I'm glad to hear that's growing, and maybe we can take care of some other needs soon, so.
Yes.
Had to get that one in there.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. White. Thank you. Okay, and then our next item of the agency reports is Economic Development Coalition report with their Executive Director of Economic Development Coalition for the Asheville-Bunkham County, Clark Duncan. Welcome, or David's, one of you start first.
Hair disposition looks a lot alike, so.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to just give you a quick introduction for Clark. Some of y'all may have met Clark before, but I just wanted to make sure. Clark is a Senior Vice President for Economic Development at the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce and was a four-time past Board Chair for the Seven County Carolina West Regional Economic Development Partnership. Since joining the chamber in 2008, Clark has led corporate recruitment projects including New Belgium, Lynnamar, Reich Automotive, White Labs, and just recently Pratt and Whitney, as well as strategic local industry expansions, GV Aviation, Borg Warner, Jacob Home, and Thermo Fisher. Clark has worked there during this time in 2015, when the International Economic Development Council was awarded the accreditation of the International Economic Development Council and is one of the only 62 accredited economic development organizations in the nation. Under leadership of the EDC Board of Directors, the EDC has announced over 5,000 new direct jobs and 1.9 billion in new capital investment since 2010. You know, Kirk warned me a long time ago for Clark and I not to appear in the same room together, because, you know, Clark does such a wonderful job. So it's an honor to have Clark come over here and work with us today, so thank you. Clark?
You said it more than once.
Welcome, Clark. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
I'm getting to the point I don't remember what I've said, so.
David Francis is a hard act to follow. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to spend some time with you tonight and to partner with you for these past three years. This evening, I want to real quickly talk about really the foundations and rationale for our partnership. One, how we invest in supporting business and growing jobs and tax base in the economies of our two counties. And lastly, review our objectives, and most importantly, how are we tracking towards those goals? It was in 2018 that our Asheville Chamber was approached by Haywood County and the Haywood Chamber with the unique regional proposal to pool our resources for improved outcomes in economic development. The resulting partnership really recognized how interdependent our communities had become over the past many years, and how a rising economic tide was good for families on both sides of the county line. From our earliest conversations, our partnership was built on a foundation of shared regional experience and identity, and really crafted from the viewpoint of how business looks at our region, to the rest of our state, to the rest of our national economy, the rest of our global economy. Our region is a fast-growing metro area, close to a half million in population, which frankly still surprises a lot of us that are living here. So it's important that, at least from a business perspective, we see ourselves that way, and we represent ourselves in that way. Central to that identity, of course, is a shared set of regional assets, from our mountains and our rivers to recreation and adventure, or the vitality of our main streets in Waynesville to Weaverville, or Black Mountain to Canton. We share these assets in common. And just as importantly, we share a $22 billion regional economy, with historical strengths, many of which we celebrated earlier this evening, with recent expansion activity driven by many of the same industry sectors, like plastics, life sciences, food and beverage, automotive and aerospace manufacturing, and paper and non-woven textiles. In fact, the five years leading up to the pandemic, our metro area led the entire state of North Carolina in percentage growth of our GDP, as well as percentage growth of our manufacturing jobs. And I think that's something to be proud of. Most importantly to business, however, we share workforce. We share regional workforce that just prior to the pandemic topped out at 200,000 available workers for the first time. Forgive a very busy slide, but the purple dots represent households that are employed in the four counties of the metro area, Haywood, Bunkham, Henderson, or Madison. And data tells us that these 11 North Carolina counties actually feed workforce to our employers on a daily basis. And that's a great thing, because that's the lifeblood of the economic expansion that we celebrated, for example, tonight over Giles. You'll also see in commuting from more than four Tennessee counties, three upstate South Carolina counties that also drive into the metro area for employment. All in, this trend accounts for an additional 44,000 workers available to employers located here in Haywood County. And the in-commuting trend has actually increased some 30% over the last decade. And we also share a future, thanks to the work of Dr. White and her team. And it'll be a future shaped by our K-12 systems, our college, community colleges, and our regional colleges and universities. In fact, a stunning number that we like to remind our employers, within 100 miles of where we sit tonight, over 82- and four-year college institutions with 290,000 students enrolled that graduate nearly 68,000 rising workforce into our community on an annual basis. And especially in this current tight labor market, made worse by the challenges of the pandemic, smart employers are finding new and creative ways of partnering with, excuse me, these employers located on the slide, excuse me, educational institutions. But lastly, we confront and we share a very real set of challenges across our two communities. From residential growth that continues at an annual pace between 1% and 2%, and accelerated during the past year of the pandemic, each of our concerns, communities are facing concerns about affordability and about constrained public resources, and the emerging needs for regional leadership on things like housing and infrastructure and education and transit. All of these shared experiences were really the catalyst for our first conversation, understanding that strategic economic development, better jobs, and stronger career paths are one of the greatest tools in our toolbox to combat these challenges. We were inspired by the idea that together, we could accomplish more. So let me pivot real quick to talk about the structure of our partnership. At the EDC, I lead a team of eight, and the staff runs the gamut from leading our industrial retention and expansion programs to industrial recruitment, entrepreneurial development, workforce development, and economic research. And this follows the best practices and did earn us accreditation twice now since 2015, and I credit that to the talented folks on my team. Our contract with Haywood specifically features these three areas that are highlighted: marketing and recruitment, really to leverage the years of investment of this commission in preparing and grading Beaver Dam and Jonathan Creek for economic development; also working with your most promising startups for entrepreneurial development, and we do that through a partnership with the Haywood Chamber; and leveraging our in-house research team to support recruitment projects on an as-needed basis. So together, we have an expanded marketing reach that neither organization could really budget going alone. Our regional marketing and recruitment budget alone consumes about 30% of my annual budget of $1.1 million, and that's for my team, my staffing, and programming needs. On an annual basis, this includes targeted lead generation and expansion meetings with executives at many of the conferences and trade shows featured here. It also involves travel to a number of these destinations to meet with company executives that are in expansion mode, or meet with site selectors to help them understand the unique advantages of doing business here in western North Carolina. It also includes a robust digital marketing strategy. We invested about $85,000 in our website relaunch last year with an additional $40, $45,000 annually spent in search engine marketing, which Smart People tells me is just the way we keep people coming to the website on an annual basis. And at the end of the day, our job is the discipline of sales, understanding what industries are going to be successful here, which industries are going to complement our goals of quality job creation and growing our tax base, and then staying in front of those decision-makers that are expanding specifically here in the southeast, and doing that work day in and day out. Experience has also taught us to fish in the right ponds. Data tells us which kinds of industries we're best able to support here through our historical strengths of our K-12 system or our community college system. And so our five target areas, real quickly, are listed on that slide. Advanced manufacturing, life sciences, specifically like medical devices and food and beverage manufacturing. Outdoor products continue to be a very fast-growing and very well-suited to our community. Climate and environmental services, as well as office and technology growth due to demographic changes in the metro area. In these meetings, we're prepared to discuss a number of things: research-driven response to employers' questions, the strength of our academic partners. But most importantly, we have to have a physical place for economic development to happen. And these five brochures featured here represent the five industrial sites that are currently available across Bunkham and Henderson, excuse me, Bunkham and Haywood Counties, from fully wooded sites to shovel-ready sites like Jonathan Creek, Beaver Dam. As the only county-owned industrial site in the greater metro area, Beaver Dam especially offers a unique, I think, promise to the right employer. So we developed this custom landing page to help share the story of Beaver Dam and its attributes to consultants and companies nationally. Rather than click on the link and risk the Wi-Fi, I took a couple screenshots for you, because I wanted you to see, for example, these renderings that we commissioned last year that kind of show employers some of the excitement, right? Something that they could accomplish building on this 10-acre pad. You'll also see we have drone video that show the capacity of the site to assist essentially a shovel-ready project because of the grading work that's been done over the years. And that drone video is actually pretty exciting, because it closes with obviously a view of the long-range mountains in the distance, and that's a view that few industrial sites have to offer, in my experience. As you scroll down that page, you'll see additional renderings, as well as additional site photographs, as well as economic rankings for the state. And that's usually how we get on the radar. If a company has a compelling reason to be at the intersection of I-40 and I-26, or to be in the southeast, to be close to a supply chain or a customer, so promoting those North Carolina rankings and our partnerships with the states are critical. Real quickly, I'll round out our partnership by sharing we also work closely with the startup community here in Haywood. Beyond recruitment, our entrepreneurial programs really seek to build the next generation of headquartered businesses here in our region, and we're mentoring and funding and growing those high-potential, high-growth startups today. These few names are a quick snapshot of four Haywood startups that were recruited in partnership with twice-a-year events we host with the Haywood Chamber to attract these companies into our entrepreneurial development programs. You'll see Monstera, Sparksmith, Shuttleby, and Narcissist Sunglasses. I think David Francis has a pair of those. Shuttleby is a highly scalable, actually Uber-for-kids model that we're pretty excited about, and our participants have access to MIT-trained mentors, funding opportunities that really run the gamut, from microgrants, which, for example, we awarded one to Monstera last year. It's a $5,000 microgram for people that don't have access to friends and family for that early-stage capital, all the way up to angel investment, obviously connection to resources, marketing exposure, and business development expertise. And finally, we're fortunate to have an in-house research team led by two full-time data analysts that inform our strategies, help our companies make better decisions. And this leads to data-driven decision-making by business, which is a good thing. And I want to share one quick piece of research with you, because it gets a lot of traction when we're showing Beaver Dam. This study demonstrates essentially the labor shed available at 30, 45, and 60-minute commute times from that specific site. And I think both visitors that were showing the site, as well as locals, are surprised to learn that within a 30-minute commute, you'll have access and reach over 125,000 workers, not residents, but people of working age. Within 45 minutes, that grows to 200,000, and within an hour's commute, we can reach over a quarter of a million workers from Beaver Dam. In conclusion, over the course of our three-year relationship, our teams invested in more than 45 lead-generation trips and industry research projects, yielding about 210 new total leads. Approximately 25% of those were fit for either Jay Creek, Beaver Dam. And if they were not a fit, it was largely because the company needed an existing building that we didn't have. Maybe they needed a larger site, more than these two offered. Perhaps it was an office project, not manufacturing. And oftentimes, there's a specific mileage or proximity need to be close to the airport or Charlotte or Greenville, for example. Of these leads, we were successful in attracting 10 to come visit. That's where we know when people are more likely to fall in love with doing business in western North Carolina. And of those 10, we were finalists for three. And while we're not in this business to come in second, we've learned a lot along the way. Two of these losses, for example, the company ultimately decided in the closing weeks of the project, they needed more acreage, and landed on, I believe, a 25- and a 30-acre site in neighboring Henderson County. The third project had a change of business conditions as they were coming to a decision point. We're hoping those conditions will again change back in our favor. And finally, looking forward, there are five active projects currently considering investment in both of these two sites. And based on our 30, 60, 90-day activity levels, based on sort of the return of public health and vaccinations, and certainly the economic rebound, we're very optimistic about both activity levels and the significant recovery for our hometown economy here in the next year. So thank you for your time and attention this evening, members of the commission. I'd conclude here and be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Is anybody having questions for Clark?
I have a few. A couple of things that you mentioned. In the very beginning of your presentation, you said, pre-pandemic, we were the largest, we had the largest growth. Did I hear that right? What were you saying about that?
We led the state, the metro area led the state in percentage growth of our GDP and percentage growth of manufacturing jobs. So not that we grew more, but that our percentage growth, actually, we were on a faster-growth trajectory than in the other part of the state, which speaks to what folks like Giles probably have experienced in recent years, is that manufacturing job growth has been one of the faster-growing areas of development in the region.
And tying onto that same question, you said there were only five manufacturing sites available between Haywood and Bunkham County?
So those are parks. But yes, industrial sites are, you know, in my business, I look at constraints on our growth, and work, you know, you have to have people, and you have to have place. And we're facing some real constraints on both of those fronts, to be candid. Sites are always going to be a challenge in western North Carolina. If you look out, you know, the beautiful views here out our windows, we tend to offer smaller sites, five-to-10-acre in size. And so we've had to get better at identifying what kind of industries can function on smaller footprints. And we have very few can function on smaller footprints. And we have very few, you know, larger sort of mega-sites like you might see in the middle of the state, or certainly down east where dirt cheap probably might be offensive, but where their land is also a lot less expensive than ours. So those are five parks that may have different parcels in them, yeah.
That are available.
Yes, ma'am.
And then finally, you're tying that back into the sites. You said, spoke of the number of workers that were, that would commute 60 minutes or more. Do you have a number on workers that are commuting 60 minutes? I mean, I'm fortunate to live here, and on a bad day, it's inside of about 12 minutes.
Yeah.
So I can't imagine driving an hour.
Well, we know those commuter numbers, and what their individual commutes are, I don't know. I would always lean on the story. My wife's cousin, there's families from Yancey County, will never leave the family farm, but has worked in manufacturing in Buncombe for most of his life. And that's a just over 60-minute drive, right, to work in south Buncombe County, actually, not even north Buncombe County. So I do think those commuting patterns are somewhat established for people that love where they live.
Sure.
And need to travel to where the opportunity is, which is one of the great, I think, sort of sense of urgency we all have about putting good economic development on Jonathan Creek or on Beaver Dam.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate, I just want to say, Clark, I appreciate your work with our county. I know we've had a lot of interest. I know we've had a lot of near misses, if you will. So, and I think we're really getting our areas that are available, you know, out for folks to look at. And I think we've got, maybe got some good things on the way, hopefully.
Well, appreciate the leadership of this commission. Having a county-owned site and one that has been so prepared for economic development is, gets us in the door very often. So thank you for that.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll just follow that up. You know, the thing is, is we've had a lot of activity. I mean, I've been involved in a lot of activity. It's just going to bat a lot of times and striking out, but at least you have the pitches being thrown at you. And I think without the coordination between Buncombe and Haywood, we wouldn't have anybody pitching. So I appreciate that. And I think you're getting the name out there, and we're going to hit one of these pretty soon. So I appreciate what you've done.
I share your optimism. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
You want else?
No. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Clark. I don't have any, I don't have any discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone want to have anything at this time? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the four items that we have in our consent agenda tonight? I did want to comment that Greg, it looks like you're doing a great job on the tax collections. I noticed it was up almost a percent, which I guess is the highest ever. So, did you want to make a comment or anything, or everything going all right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have had a good year so far. Our March percentage is 96.42%, which is almost a percent better than last year, which had been one of the best collection rates as well. And so far, we've already surpassed April's total collection rate this month. So things are going well. I think there's a number of reasons for that. A lot of real estate is transferred, which means, you know, you have to pay the taxes in order to transfer the deed. That's helped out tremendously, as well as, you know, some of the payments, the stimulus checks and things. A lot of people have used those to catch up. And the people that's been on payment plans, they've been willing to work with the county as well as we have with them. It's working, got a good staff, and feel very fortunate to be where we are right now.
Okay.
I appreciate you making a comment on that. Appreciate it a bunch. Staff's worked hard.
Yeah. Well, you tell me we appreciate that. I did notice that, and that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, is it, can I, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. The first item is to request approval of two full-time adoption intake counselors to replace the five personnel previously provided by Sarge's Animal Rescue Foundation for the Animal Services Department to be paid from fiscal year 2021 budgeted funds. We have our Animal Services Director, Howard Martin, here tonight. Hey, Howard, how are you?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. A little background on the request. On February 26th this year, Sarge's Animal Rescue Foundation submitted notification to discontinue its relationship with Animal Services in providing personnel to facilitate adoption services for the county. Sarge's provided five persons that constituted about 122 hours of manpower. The allotment of the personnel provided two persons Monday through Saturday, hours of operation for adoptions. One of those five persons also had oversight of the volunteer foster program for Animal Services. The adding of two full-time positions will provide the ability for Animal Services to facilitate adoption services provided by these five persons with Sarge's. The services for volunteer and fostering program have been assigned to current staffing within Animal Services. The budget impact is total for two full-time positions for the remaining budget year is approximately $16,000. But that could be reduced depending on the time that we get them hired, if approved. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the request.
We do appreciate Sarge's, you know, providing this service for us. As long as they have, you know, it's been good to, I mean, it's saved the taxpayers money. It's also helped keep animals from being euthanized. And I guess you're keeping up with that still, still, too, the euthanization rate?
Currently, from year-to-date today, as a matter of fact, I pulled it, you're at 96%.
96%, okay. And that's considered no-kill shelter?
Well, it's considered low-kill.
What, low-kill?
I don't.
Okay.
4% got killed.
Yeah.
So it can't be, can't be a no-kill.
I mean, there's a definition as far as identifying no-kill. It's maintaining that euthanasia rate at less than 10%.
Yeah, less than 90, yeah, yeah, exactly. Is anyone having questions for Howard?
That's an amazing, I mean, that's a great rate.
It is, yeah.
I mean, amazing. Compared to when I started becoming a commissioner, it's probably about 50%.
Yeah.
It probably was. So this is going, this actually, when Sarge's pulls out of there, it's going to actually give people of Haywood County a little more opportunity to adopt animals directly from our animal shelter. Is that right?
Well, they have been. But they have always had the opportunity to adopt from the shelter. I think it's, the personnel's been over there with Sarge's, but they were not going down to Sarge's to adopt. They were adopting them out of our facility, and their personnel was interacting with the public coming in that they provided up there. We still collaborate, and they still pull animals from us, along with other rescue facilities. Brother Wolf, we just took some the other day to, that are going out of state, and transferred them through a rescue of that nature. I believe it's almost last year's stats. For rescues, it was 200 for Brother Wolf that pulled from us, and Sarge's pulled, like, 202. So they were kind of even. We're very thankful for that. During that timeframe in March to June, we weren't able to adopt out any animals because we couldn't have them spay or neutered. So that really helped us maintain the numbers that we needed to.
Is there another way for people in Haywood County to look to see the available dogs?
It's on our website, yes. And even with the, we're allowing people to come in on appointment-based, but we also have a kiosk there that they can pull up the animals. It's same as that on the website.
Okay.
It's underneath our Animal Services website and very, going to it, yes, sir.
All right. And that's kind of what the key I want to get out, is that there's a way for people to look and see what's available for adoption at the animal shelter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What is our adoption rate for dogs and cats?
Well, you have three ways that animals facilitate out of the shelter, return to owners. And that's right at about 23% of all animals that are coming in. Then we have rescues that pull from it. I would say probably 60 to 70% out of that number there that reaches 95% of all animals coming out in there that leave disposition of that way.
And we charge for that? What's the charge that we charge?
Normal fee for an adoption of a dog is 85, and then for a cat is 50.
50.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And you think with this change, we'll not see any difference in the adoption rate or anything, or just smooth sailing?
No, I've had a, I've actually have had a employee that is full-time already doing adoption since the first of the year, just absorbed that into it already.
That's good.
And we've been handling the foster and the volunteering since last year.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Howard?
You think the two full-time is going to be enough to cover the five that, that personnel that Sarge's was providing?
Yes, sir. I'm grateful for two.
Sounds like it needs more.
Okay, any other questions? I'll, here are no questions. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, the next item in the regular agenda is to request approval to accept and appropriate Petco, formerly Petco Foundation Invest-in-Life-Saving Grant in the amount of $10,000 awarded to the Animal Services Department for the purchase of microchips and microchip scanners to be used in the field. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Background on this is Haywood County Animal Services in support with our nonprofit organization, Friends of Haywood County Animal Services Shelter Board members applied for an application for the Petco Love Interest-in-Life-Saving Grant. This request was for the foresight of purchasing microchips and microchip scanners, updated more universal scanners. This will allow us to provide chips to all our animals that are being adopted out at this point. They have been since October, but this will continue doing that. And plus, give us the ability that, with officers in the field, to scan animals on-site and return them to home without even bringing them to the shelter.
Wow, okay.
Also, when the ongoing, I keep hearing it over, pandemic allows that we can uniform, put together microchip clinic with a rabies clinic simultaneously with the oversight of our contracted vet, and provide these for the public also.
This microchip, is it a magnetic-based strip? It doesn't have to have a battery replacement or anything?
No, sir. No, sir.
I guess some private person that's got a really expensive pet.
Sir.
I guess some private person that has a really expensive pet could probably purchase one of those theirself.
All vets will have that services provided through their, through their business there. You can purchase one through your vet every, when you go. It, if used properly, it can be a very useful tool. Obviously, we see chips in animals currently now that have been rehomed two or three times by the time we backtrack. But it is an excellent way of identifying and getting a hold of the owner that they may have not known.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we've had people transit into the county for the weekend, for the week, for a month, vacationing their animals, and they lose them, and then we were able to contact them that way.
Is that put under the skin?
Yes, sir.
Subcutaneously?
Yeah. You couldn't, you can't even feel or find it. Over a period of time, sometimes they can move, but generally, it's through the, between the shoulder blades that they're inserted. Cats also, we incorporate them into cats also.
So we're putting this in every animal? Is that correct?
Currently now, since October, September last year.
And did I understand you right, Mr. Martin? You said that we were opening it up, or we would open it up to the public, et cetera?
Through, we can't provide it as a service through the county because I don't have a full-time vet on staff. But in conjunction with a rabies clinic, when I will have a vet present on-site, where we can provide those at the same time we're doing a rabies shot.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item two of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I will say that's right up on the level with Arnold Schwarzenegger's grant contribution to our Board of Elections.
Thank you.
That's nice, $10,000 grant for that. That's, that's nice.
I asked for something, and I'm giving you something back.
How many, I should have asked this, but how many will that microchip?
Ma'am?
I should have asked this, but how many microchips does that allow for?
Probably about 1,500, 2,000. That's just off the top of my head. They're about $499 a piece.
How much are they?
About $499 a piece.
How many animals do you see come through in a year's time, on average?
Last year, we had approximately 1,600 animals come through the shelter.
That'd probably get us to a year.
1,600 animals.
1,600.
But all those animals were not adopted out. They were returned to the owner, transferred to a rescue.
I got you.
If we already have a chip inserted in an animal, and it goes to a rescue, we have a fee, and the rescue pays the fee for the chip that's in there.
So that's about five different animals a day, plus the ones you have already there?
We have.
Five new interactions.
Five.
Sometimes you get the same, is that counting the same animals multiple times a year?
No, I don't, I don't.
You need to hang out down there.
I don't retread them. I don't.
I've got enough dogs. Listen, I'm at an animal shelter at my house right now. Especially at night. Ray paid, so I don't need to, I don't need to go hang out.
I really, I really like.
I got plenty of dogs.
If you want to get rid of River, I'll take you.
No, I'm keeping River. That's the only one that's.
I have a lot of puppies.
Yeah, he's got, he's chipped, though, too. He's got a chip, so if you're.
I'll know where to come.
He's a very good dog.
Bring him back.
Okay, did we vote? We did vote on this, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'm in line. You want to take a picture now?
Thank you.
After we vote? I think we, did we vote?
Thought we voted.
Yeah, I made the motion.
We voted. Thought we made the motion, I second. We've only had two items on the agenda.
Did we vote Tracy first?
Six commissioners said we did, so we did.
Yeah. Brian, you're going to have to get with it.
The sixth commissioner trumps the county manager every time.
You want to take off?
You can, everybody, county manager can come through.
Howard, do you want to get in?
I'm doing so. You go right ahead. Go right ahead. I guarantee we're going to get, we're going to get caught up in the future. I'll stand before you.
I held my breath. Hey, I held my breath. I held my breath.
Okay, our next order of business is, number three is to request approval of resolution prescribing procedures for disposable surplus retired service canons, and authorize in sale of retired service canine.
I held my breath. Hey, I held my breath. I held my breath.
Okay, our next order of business is, number three is to request approval of a resolution prescribing procedures for disposable of surplus retired service canines, and authorizing sale of retired service canine. Chief Deputy Haynes, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. What I bring before you this evening is a, is a good thing, it's a celebration, a little bit sad, a little bit, a little bit a lot happy for canine handler Randy Jenkins and our, very much beloved, one of our canines that's retiring and has retired. He has made a whirlwind tour and had lots of different celebrations, and a lot of people have celebrated with Lenny here in the last little while, so it's time for him to, to relax and enjoy some retirement. So with that said, I bring to you this evening a resolution, whereas we would be surplusing Lenny and allowing him to, to spend the rest of his days with his handler and best friend, Deputy Randy Jenkins. What the resolution says is, whereas under North Carolina General Statute 160A, 265, authorizes the board to dispose of surplus property, and whereas the Haywood County Sheriff's Office currently has in its possession a retired patrol narcotics detection canine by the name of Lenny, asset number 3105, purchased on the 21st day of June 2013, is no longer in service, and whereas, once a retired service canine is no longer in service nor unable to conduct county business per financial considerations indicating that the interests of the county would be best served by disposing of the retired service canine, whereas the Haywood County Board of Commissioners authorizes the disposition of a retired service canine to the trained handler upon the handler's agreement to purchase for the amount of $1 and accepting custody of and assuming all liability and responsibility for the care for the remainder of the retired service canine's life. Whereas the handler accepting custody of retired service canine will complete the transfer of ownership of surplus retired sheriff's office service canine form, which is attached to this as well, which states assumption of all liability and responsibility to the remainder of the canine's life, and whereas Deputy Randy Jenkins is a canine, is, is a sheriff's office canine handler, trained and equipped to care for Lenny, a retired service canine who assumes all liability and responsibility for the remainder of the canine's life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, in general session on April 19th, 2021, hereby adopts a policy to allow retired service canines to be sold to the handlers for the amount of $1, who accept custody of and assuming all liability and responsibility for the care of the canine for the remainder of the retired service canine's life, and be it further resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, in general session on April 19th, 2021, declares Lenny the retired service canine as surplus and authorizes the sale for the amount of $1 to Deputy Randy Jenkins of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office as a canine handler, adopted this 19th day of April 2021. That is the, the hope and prayer that, that that resolution will be accepted and adopted for the sake of, of not only Lenny, but also Deputy Randy Jenkins. They are, they are an inseparable pair. So with that, we ask for your acceptance.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Chief Haynes?
Could you comment on some of Lenny's accomplishments during his tenure with the Haywood County Sheriff's Department, any big, big feats that he, he was involved with?
Well, his biggest feat, he, he had a lot of feats, and I will say his biggest one is he is the very first canine that Sheriff Christopher bought when he took office. So he's been with us from three months shy of the entire tenure of Sheriff Christopher. He was the first canine, and he, he's had lots of accomplishments, he's, he's found lots of missing children. He is a very good tracking dog. He's had accomplishments with canine searches and a lot of narcotic seizures, but the biggest claim to fame for Lenny is public relations. Lenny brings to the table something that most canines don't, he's approachable. He's approachable to the public, we have walked him through schools, we've dealt with him through the DARE program, we've taken him to childcare centers. He has been an ambassador for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and moreover, Haywood County, more so than most people will ever know. So I think that's probably the biggest accomplishment that he has had, and he is a very beloved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, will you approve item three?
I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. How old is Lenny, and what kind of dog is he?
He is a Czechoslovakian shepherd. Age-wise, I'm not exactly sure, I want to say around 11.
Yeah. So do you have another canine in the pipeline to replace him with?
We will be purchasing another canine at the, at the start of the next fiscal year to replace him, but he has not been replaced at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to the fourth item of our regular agenda is to request approval to accept the bid from Western Carolina Communications Systems Incorporated in the amount of $102,687.29 for the purchase and installation of radio equipment and emergency response equipment and nine new patrol vehicles to be paid from fiscal year 2021 budgeted funds and approval for county manager to sign all documentation required for said purchase and installation. And we have our interim finance director, Kristen, here. Hey, Kristen.
Hello. Yes, this is the request to approve the bid from Western Carolina Communications Systems for the radio equipment and emergency response equipment that will go in non-p patrol cars. The bid came in at $102,687.29, and it will be paid from budgeted funds. This item came before the board on February 15th, but as the total surpassed the requirement for formal bidding, it's being brought back to affirm the bid, and we will also note that it, the price increased about $500 from when it came in February, so, and that's due to just the cost of materials and equipment.
Anybody have any questions about that? And here, and I'll entertain a motion, will you approve item four?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is item, or item five of the regular agenda is to request approval to accept and appropriate the Dogwood Health Trust Grant in the amount of $261,690 for a one-time match for region A counties minus Cherokee, to ensure $538,310 in HUD home funds is allocated for affordable housing initiatives, and approval for county manager to execute all documents associated with said grant. David, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, I don't know if you recall, but a few months ago, we had Don McGowan here, who gave us the impetus for this idea about a consortium to get together with Haywood and the western counties and the townships included in those to form a Southwest Home Consortium that would allow us to apply for HUD funds that would potentially give us roughly about $750,000 a year. And so part of that, those home funds, as I said, come from HUD, and they're allocated through the US Housing and Urban Development and typically go to assist with affordable housing in urban areas. Rural areas can be eligible for these funds by forming a consortium made up of neighboring local governments. allowable use of the home funds include land purchase, new construction, rental assistance, down payment assistance, and rehabilitation of existing homes. So part of our agreement was with the counties out west that Haywood County would become the lead entity for this new Southwest Consortium. Unfortunately, during this process, the Cherokee decided to pull out, which then left a first year funding, lack of funds for the first year of matching funds that we had had. When we previously worked with this, Dogwood had agreed to put up about $100,000. At the request of Southwest Commission, we were encouraged to write another grant back to Dogwood for the funds that, that we would be missing with Cherokee dropping out. So Mr. Moorhead and I wrote the quick grant, happy to report that we were awarded the grant in an amount of $262,000 this past week for the matching funds, and then I'm very happy to report that HUD approved our consortium agreement, and we were awarded $542,000 for the consortium agreement for that. So we are up and running. We started this program back in June of 19, talking about how things take a long time to mature and get there, so I'm really happy that this is coming together, and we, and I'm very appreciative of the money that Dogwood chose to invest in Haywood, in the other counties, in the townships out west. I'm very happy that HUD has allotted those funds to us as well, too. So, as I said before, when I started the meeting, I get to end the meeting, the bookend of the meeting, it's been, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good meeting, a good day with the expansion projects and, and, you know, ending up on, working on affordable housing that, for our region. This will be a three-year agreement with HUD, will be eligible for the $750,000 for each of these years. Again, Haywood County is the lead entity, those funds will pass through Haywood, and Southwest Commission will be administering the program, and, but we are in control of the funds as they go there. Board, have any questions?
We got a total of 800, right around $800,000. Is that right? The 261, 690, and the 538?
So we got, so we got, we got the 262,000, and then we'll, we'll get the, and we also, then we get the other 542,000, which, which makes up there for the first year. And then, because we, that initial year is when we had to have matching funds, and then after that, it's the regular contribution of 750 will be, well, not 750 now, it's 670 since Cherokee dropped out, excuse me, 670,000 a year now. With Cherokee dropping out, it would have been 750, but it's 670.
How long does that last?
Three years.
Three years?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And what type of affordable housing initiatives will it be used for?
So those, these will be project-based, and so if a entity has a project that, you know, for an affordable housing project, they would come to these Southwest Home Consortium and, and apply, you know, for these funds, but they have to have 25% match to be able to access any of these funds. And the, the good thing about these funds, that they don't have to be expended every year, we can pull up those funds from year to year and use those, you know, for a bigger project as it, as it comes available there as well, too. That, that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Here, and I'll entertain a motion, will you approve item five of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is your second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose? Okay, it's unanimous. Our next order of business is appointments, but we do not have any tonight, and then our next order of business is closed session, which is Economic Development 143-318-11A4. I'll entertain a motion, will you go into closed session?
Make a motion, we'll go into closed session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. Do we anticipate anything that we need for the media to stay for? Okay, no action, okay. Okay, no action, okay.